Six thirty. Meeting of. Select Board. Order. Jeff. Kathy here. John's here.
John's here.
Okay. Are there public comments on non-gender items? Very one online. Okay. There is no chairman's report. There anything on the action items, but. Anything like add for.
I think last time I did ask that we add the Ocean Street decision back when that was up. We didn't do that. And then the short term round of bylaw target date was today, but are we going to discuss it at the next meeting? Not on his agenda.
It was part of the possible. Yes. It's one of the parties.
Oh, part of the party, those guys. Okay. And the Porsha Road. Water line. Which we need to have shot available.
Yeah, so when we do the. Okay, so that's me.
Okay. And will we have. Information on the DPW facility study?
Yes, I told the.
Okay. The first. Item on our agenda. Is alcohol license transfer of public care.
Hello.
Yes.
I live in a select word on a public hearing and transfer of. Online public car premises. In store, British license.
Discussion?
Yes. Yes.
Open. Dan says yes.
Yeah.
Kathy said yes, Jeff says yes. Okay. You're standing, I think you would like to speak.
Yeah.
Please identify yourself. And and give us an address. Of the.
Um, good evening, I'm in the town, John Meridian, the Vakis Law offices. East Central Avenue. With the reason that Kuma Patel. Your address.
Oh, he doesn't should be important, middle of the night. In one night.
I think we have that in the paper where she's here several nights.
Um, we're here, we have. Seabreeze Convenience LLC. They claim to see this public policy, the purchase of Seabreeze Variety. At Beach Road.
Sweet.
It's true. This is a gas station unit store, we're seeking approval tonight of a transfer of the B R line. Package store license at that location. Approval of Kuma Patel here as manager of record. And approval of the pledge of license toward your modern trust company, which modern trusts would find its. This transaction. This is a transfer to new ownership, there's no change in store footprint. Or building. It means tip certified. But three or four additional employees should be tip certified. And they will use ID scare. For sale ID checking system. The store hours will be six AM to eleven PM. With alcohol sales, it'll be eight AM to eleven PM. Sunday, Saturday. And Sundays, ten AM to eleven PM. I think about I state law. We can score here in a gas station giving store, won't seem likely to change of business operation. Just new ownership of it, it's been very experienced on health sales. So that look many questions.
No questions on the paperwork, look in order.
Jeff.
Hmm, it's pretty straightforward.
Same here. Yes.
The boards that's in place probably.
Oops. Jeff. I think you're next.
I I'm next if we should close the evidentiary, I make a motion to close the evidentiary.
If we do, that's true.
Yes.
Okay. Is there a good comment? Okay.
Then I will make a motion to close the evidentiary portion of the public hearing.
Sorry.
Jeff.
Yes.
Kathy, yes, Dan says yes.
John, yes.
I I guess I'll move that the select board approved the transfer of the annual line remote off premises package store. That's the essence. At the Beach Beach Street of by Seabreeze Variety. Inc. To Seabreeze Convenience LLC.
Just a second.
Okay.
John.
Yes.
Dan says yes, Kathy.
Yeah.
Jeff says yes. Great. But.
Yep.
Would you rate success?
Okay.
Okay, the. Next item. On the agenda is to review and consider adjustment to the water bill for thirty three Harbor Street. And I am going to concue myself because I am a friend of the. People who are requesting, and I don't think I trust myself to be unbiased. John, you're.
All right. Yes. So the the issue is the review of this adjustment of the water bill, is there Mr. Panetta?
Yes, I'm here.
Good evening. Good evening.
I'm very grateful to all of you for putting this on the agenda, making time for what is admittedly a minor matter, thank you. Uh, it was just a shocking. Bill and the problem was. We didn't seem to have any warning of a change in the rate. Structure. Maybe it was communicated, it certainly wasn't communicated to us, if we'd known our bill was going to be. Coming in a triple the average yearly bill and double the biggest bill we'd ever had before. We would have adjusted our. Consumption pattern, of course. We just didn't. Get the work. So if you're willing to consider some kind of adjustment. Thank you, and we certainly realize you may need to deliberate and come to a decision. Uh, and inform us down the line, and that's certainly. Fine, we'll accept whatever. You've come up with, and thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Panetta. Jeff, do you have any thoughts, questions?
My concern is, I mean, Greg, we posted this in several places, right?
So we did, we did not send out. The notice prior to the season start.
You did not send the notice.
We did, we had notices in the paper, we had. Very social media postings. Her updates in the cricket as well as my article. So it wasn't out there, was it a direct notice to every? Every customer, no.
But to the major users, that would have. I guess we're in that category, that would have been very helpful.
Right, so we did. Work with. Lot of major users in terms of looking at their bills. And the water task force. It was working. I don't have in front of me who all that including. But I know the task force had been reaching out to the different client users.
Um, yeah, I was a member of the task force at the time, and I know that we had a list of the top users, I don't know where you were on the list. Mr. Panetta, but I suspect you were. Up there. And we did contact a few of the very top users. Just to kind of get opinions, I wouldn't say to let them know this is what was going to happen or not happen, but to get. Opinions on this is what we're thinking. And what are your thoughts, so it was a discussion that went on probably for. Years. Certainly a year and a half. That we were discussing changing the water. The water rates, and I know that we had looked at one point in time and decided we better delay it at least six to nine months, it was going to happen in two thousand twenty three. And it moved to two thousand twenty four, so. There was a lot of public dialogue, I can tell you, there were at least two public meetings, public hearings. Associated with the discussion with regard to the cost, and then as Greg has mentioned. There were articles in the cricket on July twenty sixth and also on June twenty eighth. In consecutive months, there were topics where water costs, water rates. And the changing of the water rates were in there, as well as, of course, the tie that.
I mean, my concern is we do have one person, everybody in the world's.
Well, Jeff, I I certainly understand.
Okay, wait a second, okay, please. All right, Jeff, are you? Any more questions or?
No, I just. Yeah.
Okay, Kathy.
I had one question regarding. Renata, how do you typically stay informed as to what's going on in the town, because our. Modus operandi is to make sure big changes are published in the cricket. Really, social media, et cetera, because every time we make a change. It's doing something, you know, a direct mail approach is quite expensive.
Yes.
You know, so. I I think we, to John's point, we. Communicated multiple times, public hearings, et cetera. So I'm just. We understand the shock, but as citizens, we're all. We all have a responsibility to try and stay informed as best we can, so if you have other suggestions. Other than a direct mail. Because that that just expense more.
Understood. But if the rate is going to double or, I mean, triple the average bill, that's a. That's an enormous change and with no warning, wow.
So I think Greg did mention that we hit the heavy hitters, you know, I don't know. Where's the kind of, you know, sell on the. Okay, yeah, I think we're kind of leaning with. Jeff here, we do it for, we can't just do it for one person, we we have to do it for. Other people can. If you beat that voice again.
Um, I did check with the water clerk. Of course, you're not alone in being a top user. How many other people got in touch with the water clerk and said, what's going on?
Yeah.
And there was one other person. That asked, but they did not pursue it, they just said, well. I've got a big water bill here. And the the billings for the very top tier did go up about fifty percent. And now very few people, and you are in those few people category, hit that top tier. Uh, which is tier number four now, it was tier number six, but very few people, and they all went it during the summer quarter, which of course is.
And we had a drought here.
You hit it, yes, so I mean, water was. People that were in that top tier, there were just a few, but only one other person really came back, everyone else. Either they were aware. Or they were not aware and they just paid the bill, I don't know. But it was not, the phone was not ringing off the hook. In 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 regard, so. I understand that your your bills went up and I don't know how far you are in the highest tier in the summer, but apparently enough.
Our normal annual is a thousand dollars or so, and this year it's twenty six.
Two thousand or something.
Twenty six hundred.
Okay, all right.
That's quite a change.
Yeah, and that top tier went up from about nine dollars and twenty six cents up to fourteen.
Now, my neighbor said my bill was six thousand dollars, so, you know, that's top tier, we're not.
Ah, maybe on a first name basis with some people on the water task force. That's a person probably in that category.
Well, thank you for your consideration.
That's a lot, we appreciate it.
Yeah, I mean, I certainly feel for you, but.
Yeah. You know, if you'd like some sort of a payment schedule, that makes a whole lot of difference, but.
Thank you for. Taking it up. We appreciate it.
Okay.
We'll we'll.
Kind of adjust adjust usage, and the overall objective here is to. Adjust water usage in town, which is very high, as I can compare to our neighboring towns, we're trying to get the usage down and. Of course, rates are.
Yeah.
One way to try and encourage people to use less water.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, I thank you for taking the time to come down.
Thank you. For considering my letter. Thanks very much.
Very much.
Thank you.
Jeff. Very welcome to see you, I'll see you here. Good hand back here. C P C is this.
Sorry.
All right. This is what I said, thank you.
It's not showing the same.
No.
Yes. That's the. No, for personal, I want to say. The. Next item on the agenda. Is the Community Preservation Committee project review. If someone here.
Jeff, it's Jack Burke about one.
Good evening, everybody, Jack Burke from the Community Preservation Committee. Before you tonight, you have our annual. List slate of projects that we will. Firm up at our meeting this Thursday. Evening. Um, but we would like you to take a look at it, and we appreciate any. Comments you may have, questions, and. Uh, we look for your support coming into the April Town meeting.
Thank you. Jeff, do you have any?
Just a question. Could you just refresh my memory on what the focus is for the CPA phones?
Yes. CPA statute allows us to. Give grants in three areas, historical. Preservation. Parks and Recreation as a second tier and. Community housing, so those are the three areas that we can. Accept applications and review, there's this very stringent set of guidelines that the state has given us, and. You may see on the. Spreadsheet tonight that there was one application from the. Downtown improvement that we could not act on. Because it was not an allowable. Project.
Yeah.
Yeah, Jack, yeah, I did have a question about the historic street lamps, and so they don't qualify, whatever the. Definition is, maybe there was nothing to restore, they were building something new.
That that is correct, John, the 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 guideline for historic. Preservation is for us to spend money on restoring something. That is already in existence and not creating a new asset, you cannot create a historic asset.
Right, right, I suspected, although they were nice touch, and they are nice touch. Where they do exist. Um, question, so the total is six ninety two. Which is a lot, how does that stack up against previous years in terms of the amount of money allocated?
Okay. Up in the left-hand column, you'll see that we had unreserved balances coming into the year. Of three hundred and thirty thousand. Dollars sitting in the bank. To the right, you'll see fiscal year twenty six, we estimate four hundred and forty one thousand. Two hundred and. Sixty three. Dollars is new. Surcharge money. And a state match estimated at eighteen percent of seventy nine thousand four twenty seven. For a total of five twenty roughly. Add the three thirty to that, and that gives us a budget this year of eight hundred and fifty thousand six hundred and ninety. So annually, it's about the same amount. It goes up about two and a half percent a year. Roughly, uh, for the surcharge, however, the state match has gone down. Considerably in the last several years due to the lack of. Real estate sales because the funds. That go into the state trust are. Are raised by a. A fee on the deeds. Uh, so there have been a lot less real estate transactions. Uh, and the second part of that. Reduction is a lot of the big cities and towns have. Have gone into the program, there's now a hundred and ninety. Uh, cities and towns of the three hundred and fifty one. Cities and towns in Massachusetts that are in the program, including the big cities like Boston. Cambridge, Medford, Worcester, Springfield. So they've, we started off at a hundred percent in two thousand five. In Manchester, and now it's eighteen. Really, I'm sorry, I don't know if that answered your question, it is. It is kind of typical of what we've done, you'll see that we have two big items this year. Uh, one is for the rotunda for three hundred thousand, and the other is. Two hundred and fifty thousand for the Affordable Housing Trust. That's been an annual. Item over the last. Half dozen years. The that the town has supported as the trust tries to. Increase their balances to try to do something, as you know, it's. Manchester is very expensive and it's difficult, I know they have about a one point two to one point four million, I believe, right now. Uh, in their. Balance, and they're working very hard on a. On some properties, and they hope to come to us. This year with something. The three hundred thousand with the rotunda is similar to some other big items that we've had. Uh, including the Chowder House and. Crowe Chapel. But the answer to the question, it this is kind of a typical. Typical year. That we've had, early on, when the amount of. Surcharge funds were very low, when we were at one half percent. We pretty much spent. All of it every year and. Projects like the rotunda and Crowe Chapel. And the library had to be done in several phases over several years. And now with the additional funding, we can. Handle a lot of the big projects with in one year, like the Pine Street. Field project was a six hundred thousand dollar project two years ago. That we were able to fund. In one year because we had enough balances on hand.
Okay, so the numbers, but the number is typical, I'm just looking at last year's number, there was no. Last year's, the 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 total was four hundred and eighty one thousand. So maybe that was a down year.
No, no, the four eighty one included the state match, I believe.
Yes, yeah, I'm talking about what the the awarded monies. That we we spent on projects.
Yeah, but I don't, we don't pay too much attention to that, it's basically what the. The applications are that come in.
Yeah, okay, this is a, well, the three hundred thousand is a very big hit, obviously, but.
Yes, and we've had that, we've had those big hits several times over the years.
Good. I'm good.
Just just so folks understand, that three hundred thousand for the rotunda. Is the local.
Yeah.
That's what we are hoping to. We see a couple of large brands, about a billion a piece. To do the vocal.
If I may, uh, Ms. Chairman, the. The CPC does have the ability to use our funds for bonding if. If there was ever a situation where. We needed to come up with a larger amount. Of money, say several million dollars, we could do a bond over fifteen, twenty years.
Is there anyone online?
I'm sorry.
Okay. I'm not hearing anything from anyone. It sounds as if. The select board is likely to approve or to endorse. On these awards, uh, thank you much, very much, Jack, for. Black recognition on all of this.
Thank you, everyone, good night.
Good, thanks, Jack.
You're welcome.
Okay. The. Next item on the. Agenda is the commercial mooring update discussion. Where do you want to? Certainly sort of have a plan on.
I'm going to quickly turn it over to Brian.
Okay.
The line has gone through a process of looking through the. To see if there was interest. Initially there. Were sixty odd.
Yeah.
Folks who expressed interest. We thought maybe several of them will kind of go forward, indicated that they wanted to go forward, but I think they. In the end, they decided not to. So why I kept going back to the waitlist and. Eventually worked their way down, and it has turned out that at this point, no one from the from the waitlist. Ever been on it for a year or more. Has. Has acted on. Giving a moment to.
Update that.
Okay, good. So please take it over the line.
Uh, so. Twelve spots available through the Chester Marine. There are thirty people who are on the waitlist to. Are. Still interested, we have five spots to take.
Okay.
Yeah. In two. Probes. They have completely committed, but. They've indicated that they are likely to. So that means there are nine other. Eligible candidates as program is laid out right now, so everyone. Left on the list, the thirty candidates left, all people who received. Initial email, entirely at least received this email in fifteen, indicating the program. Will be offered, followed up the next day when we got the reach, and Manchester Marine circulated that to all of. At that point. We then were waiting for the people on the waitlist to respond to say, I'm interested. They were designated. From top of the list, bottom of the list. So we start working through the process. Going to offer. Candidates pass on them, we. Going down the list in the next name, so. Five taken, as I said, nine left eligible. So I think the question is. If we get through these nine eligible folks, that leaves fourteen were on the list. Who all went on the waitlist between June last year and January of this year. There is a one year hold. If we go through these kind of candidates, and there's two or three or four spots left. Can be a chest of.
I have, I have a suggestion. And I made this suggestion. Came to me when I thought that there were no takers, but even though there are some takers. I would hate to see the moorings go empty. I would hate to see Manchester Marine, anyone. Find a candidate, you know, they know who pays, but here's, you know, pay your fifteen dollars, get on the waitlist. And Manchester Marine gets to select its customers. I think that's not what we intended, so my suggestion. Is that you go back to Manchester Marine and say. We've had trouble filling spaces. Why don't you put out a different, a lower. Cost or different cost and conditions, and we will reopen it, and that. If if that fills the missing spots. Fine, otherwise, just repeat that process until the spots are fulfilled, and everybody. Who gets a spot pays whatever the final price is.
Okay.
Reverse auction.
A reverse auction, exactly.
Yeah. So if the spot's been ordered, offered to. Every candidate on the list.
Everybody on the waitlist.
Every person on the waitlist.
So that's.
Including the less than a year.
Not not including the less than a year.
Right, I understand they're. They're in their own circle here. I think the Chester Marines can say. What does the town feel like this affair?
We are open to the market.
I mean, where's my, well, my presumption is that people aren't. Jumping at it because the price is too high.
What is the price?
Uh, price looks thirty five feet minimal.
Yeah.
At two hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, eighty seven fifty.
Eighty seven.
Eighty seven fifty.
Yeah.
Just from.
Eight eight thousand seven fifty.
Eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars is is and and. Um, Manchester Marine is is paying for forty, probably a forty five foot. At one fifty. The 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 normal water.
There were fifteen dollars to them.
Yeah, fifteen.
So I suspect. One thing they'll say as well, I think what we'll do is we'll wait until June. And then the handful of people who've been on the waitlist then will then be approached then first. Because they've been on the waitlist for a year.
I'm.
One year.
Yes, I know it's just one year.
So. Once we hit June tenth, and those folks who went on. On that date. Reached that point, and they become eligible for the culture, so.
How how many people is that?
So there's a total of fourteen more on the list.
So there's a total of fourteen more on the list. As far as breakdown goes, the majority went on in January. So it's probably three who went on in June.
There are only three people that are not on the list, that that are not eligible because?
There are fourteen that aren't eligible, uh, who went on the list between June of last year
Okay.
and January of this year.
Okay.
So those are the fourteen people on the entire waitlist who are not candidates for one of those moorings.
What's what's the concern with people that are on there less than a year?
The concern is that Manchester Marine can say, ah, you are a customer you'd probably like and can pay for.
Yeah.
So pay the fifteen dollars, get on the list.
And then then you can do business.
But we're still going from the top to the bottom, no matter what.
We are, right.
Yes, but we've gone from the top to the bottom at eight thousand seven hundred and fifty, and we don't have customers.
But but there's fourteen more potential customers.
Right.
So I think we should exhaust those fourteen and then start.
Yeah, you know, we've given a window of, what, a couple of months now or a month and a half?
Uh, I sent out the first email on January fifteenth.
Okay.
So it's at the month that the regulation has been in place and that we've used that process in order to fill those spots.
If they can agree to the end, I think we need some kind of a buffer, timing buffer, maybe a year isn't the right amount of time, but you don't like getting into the situation where someone just pays the fifteen dollars and automatically gets a mooring, you know. It feels a little.
But we've been in that window for a month now, right?
So so these folks are going to remain on the waitlist and next January, there's a hope that some spots will not be there.
Yep, yep, and they'll be on the.
And then they'll be eligible, just like these folks who went on in June. So.
So you have fourteen
Total folks who are not.
that would be eligible in.
Starting June.
Oh, June.
Three June, yeah.
And then how many are after that?
Uh, those, that's the bottom of the list.
That's.
So that's everybody who's less than a year. Would everybody who was less than a year would be el, would have been on the list for a year in June?
So.
Okay, so it's not fourteen?
The total number of people who are not eligible according to the regulations right now is fourteen.
Okay.
Some of those were on the waitlist back last June, some went on the waitlist this January. So.
Okay, how many would be eligible in June? Or how many, how many were added to the waitlist in twenty twenty-four?
Of the fourteen. So I have to guess.
Sure.
Let's say that there are four or five going on in twenty twenty-four. And then the balance.
So that's not enough. So that's that's not enough
to fill the nine.
To fill the nine.
Well, we still have nine people that haven't responded, so we're not at, we're not at that yet. I'm here because I wanted to give an update and express that it could be that the Manchester Marine would come to you to ask for an exception to fill those spots. This is just a preemptive.
I mean, I think another option for them is to let people pay by the side of the boat, right? Instead of trying to collect, you know.
Yeah.
You know, and so they, I mean, but people aren't dying for it because the price is too high. So this is an open market, you know. Before we go changing a whole bunch of stuff on our side, why why can't they do a price adjustment to meet the needs of the market?
The only problem is that we're charging them.
Yeah, we are.
Yeah. But they have a specialized relationship with those moorings, right? We're allowing them to have those moorings, kind of tie them up as well.
How many feet are we charging them?
We charge them, it's forty feet.
Four.
Yeah, forty feet. That's what the model is charged for, forty feet.
So I bet they're paying six hundred dollars.
Yeah.
And it's thousands and thousands. That's that's not a major factor in their decision process. They just want to get people on these moorings. At some some number.
Yes.
The highest number they can get, eighty-seven may not be the number, maybe seventy-seven is the number. I don't know.
What's the danger to creating a low use? What's the?
Um.
Can we just wait and play this out? This is what they did this year. It was just next year.
So I'll tell them that they can go through the nine folks that are still out eligible. In June, they can go to the folks who've been on for a year, who have been on three years, so they would be eligible. And then after that, they can't fill the spots, they'll just have to wait.
They can, they can change their number.
Well, they can change that.
They can't if they are in, they can't.
But they change the number, you got to.
It's for everyone.
Yeah.
So my thought like.
So and which if they change the numbers, you have to start from the top again.
That's, yeah.
I mean, with the people who have signed on.
Well, they get the lower number.
They'd get.
Right, but they might not have paid it because the lower number, the one of the people ahead of them.
Yeah.
Who might have paid it.
Yeah.
Well, absolutely.
So it just.
I I I'm not scenario.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm a little worried.
That's a good point.
Yeah, I feel that they're starting all over.
Signing moorings is a bonus, so.
Well, I mean, if moorings were used instead of then it would get back to you.
That that's no price to pay back. That's no price to pay back.
Well, they can still use them as transients, right?
Yeah, they can, yeah.
Okay.
So that will be my message. If they can't be filled, I can't afford, I want to let people fill those last five spots out of the nine, who might get to wait in June to.
That's only going to do a couple more, sounds like.
Yeah, well, we'll see. We may not get it here.
Right, right.
So, one to one, one to two in notes.
Yeah, refresh my memory, do we have any, part of our policy? Is we, you know, we track moorings that are not used for a period of time and then we take them back, so.
Absolutely. So they didn't want to make it for one season, but by June three of the second year.
So that would apply to these particular moorings as well. If they can't fill them for a couple of years and they're not using them, because they can take them back to what they have.
But they can still use them in service.
They don't.
I'm saying if you don't.
Or they will, yeah.
They will, and they'll be used, just may not be for seasonal. They could, they're transiently, I mean. You have questions?
Yeah. So we're at a wait and see situation.
I I.
Really, no change in policy is what we're going to say.
It this is no change in policy that that as people get to have, then on the way to explore a year, they get you know, they become eligible.
Yeah, that'll be the last.
I think if Manchester Marine does show, I would like you to propose a method that would allow Manchester Marine to lower its prices, which is to say they pick different pricing conditions, you tell everybody. I think that would give them the opportunity to suck to use all of their moorings. If they're not interested in that, so.
That'd be a proposal.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. I'm going. I'm going.
Okay, this is fun, yeah.
All right, everybody. Have a good night.
The next thing on our agenda are the self signaling technology sewer updates.
Well, actually, I see the lighting plate for the process. Either the review, the planning board. I'll come there. Part of the dishes, there were a number of improvements that CST is responsible for. Get the other things scheduled for them to do now. So we have an SPRO. So so there's three things. One is an SPRO account establishing SPRO account for those values that CST is contributing, one point three billion. So that's thing number one. And number two is agreement regarding installation of the water sewer. So again, as you remember, the town, a recent CST applied for the national works grant, see three point five million. It's going to do water sewer lines up for the build, under one point eight to the property. And so CST agreed to be responsible for any cost above, three point five million. So that's what the second agreement, what is establishes that they will indeed repay the additional cost, probably in a couple hundred thousand dollar range. Don't have final numbers that those people can like to be. It also allocates sewer flow to CST. It does that in two phases. First phase broken down into three subphases. So in in phase one, in terms of the sewer flow, it's twenty-seven thousand gallons, twenty-seven six is the number. And that's for for phase one, and for phase two, as well as for flow for the existing boundary. So that twenty-six, or twenty-seven six is divided up. Twelve thousand a piece for each phase. So they would have, they would pay the connection fee for that twenty-six, twenty-seven thousand, six hundred gallons, fifteen dollars a gallon, comes to four thou, four hundred fourteen thousand. But then they also have agreed to extend the water sewer line beyond where it was going to stop to serve through new pile lab and extend it to the town right away. So that was worth a hundred thousand dollars for the vendor to complete. So CST is agreed to pay for that and use it tracking from their connection. So their net connection fee is is three fourteen. And they they pay that by a year from this, June, not June. And then furthermore, they are seeking additional flow for potential phases three and four, which would be from years ten to twelve, starting today, basically, this year. And that would be up to an additional eighteen, something eighteen thousand gallons. Assuming that they had to use the full twenty-seven six. Which is probably not likely. Those those are based on Title V flows, which tend to be pretty conservative. So their actual flows are likely to be below. Yeah, eighteen five. Eighteen thousand five hundred gallons for phases three and four. And that would if we don't have that much, then they obviously would get that. But they're asking for whatever amount is up to that amount is available. Yeah, so currently, the Comprehensiveness Waste Management Plan allocates sixty-two thousand gallons to the LCD. And so depending on what happens over the years, if it was annual flow to it, that's the current, well, that's allocated to the LCD. And so for phases three and four, they would pay an additional connection fee, but whatever the new connection fee rate is at the time that they would pay in your show. So that's that's the second agreement. And then the third agreement is the actual easement for the water and sewer lines that are traversing of CST property so that the town has some access to maintain those town pipes. So those are the three, three different agreements that are before you, that meet your covenants and hopefully, neutral sign on. There's issues or concerns, we can do some tweaking if necessary. Those before you.
So the SPRO, that's basically if for some reason the project was abandoned, right? What is the SPRO?
The SPRO account is actually, they they put the one point three million, we draw it down of that account as we do those improvements. So as we build.
Oh, so that's in relation to this?
To the permit, which requires a bike lane, for example, on School Street
Okay.
from from here to change up to Atwater. So so that's one piece. The other piece is improving Atwater Avenue itself, including the left-hand way, add a full sidewalk to the path. And also improvements to the culvert. Those are the three major pieces of the SPRO. That culvert, it was likely to be a fairly significant rebuild, so the construction money to that.
That that was going to be my question on the SPRO as well, because it it just gives a a total dollar amount, one point three, and it's not worked down amongst the three items that are mentioned. So is the culvert, we're going to gobble up all of that money, that we won't have anything for the pedestrian improvements or the bike lanes?
So all three need to get done as per the timing board condition. And check is the value is the value of it. So we're he's committing to doing the work, because they're not responsible for any of that. We own some of that.
Okay. I think the one we paid for the other culvert, it sounds like really inexpensive work, so I'm just wondering how bad it is.
It is significantly less, less expensive.
Okay.
It's it's a, it's a redlining of the culvert. And it's not a complete replacement. It's a whole, yes, it's really apples and oranges compared to the two younger culverts.
So do we have an idea of what the cost of all these projects are and what percentage they're?
Okay, so it's estimated that they're paying a hundred percent for bike lane, the upgrade, the Atwater Avenue, then almost a fifty percent of the culvert, but that covers sixty-three.
We fill that.
We did actually that percent.
We fill those numbers for me?
Yes, yeah, we do, do, do a solution back as well.
Yeah, that's.
I've got a question on the sewer line gets extended to the Atwater right of way. Where is that?
Where is it? Yeah, it's so before you sort of climb up into the back.
Okay. My my question is, that gets extended there, and at some point, we may want to drag that sewer line all the way down Atwater Avenue because we're planning on building something there.
Exactly, exactly.
And all of this construction should go on at one time. I I don't know how much disruption there is just to go, just to go to where they're back.
Right.
And that's not much.
We want to go down Atwater Avenue before we repay that.
Absolutely.
So that's quite, that's quite a wide disagreement. Because we can control the time.
Right.
We have the dollars, but the the timing is right for the time to do this, then we're.
So when you redo Atwater Avenue, you're putting a sewer line under there all in one shot.
That's right.
So, all right.
Yeah.
Other other questions. So they're paying a hookup fee of four hundred fourteen thousand dollars. There's a credit against that.
Yeah.
Is that a fixed number or what, or ten years out? That's based on twenty-seven thousand, six hundred a day. And if they use fifteen thousand, are they out the money, no matter what the story is on the hookup, even though their volume use might be
Yes.
perhaps a lot less?
So that that twenty-seven six is based on assumptions about what's we're doing, that we're going to do it. It's based on state current flows. It's based on state per count laws. And so oftentimes those, those state numbers typically are, actual uses are typically sixty percent state flows.
And and that's kind of my my question, but the four fourteen is is that's done?
Yeah.
Okay.
Based on fifteen thousand.
Yeah.
So then, yes, they're taking a bit of a risk by paying you upfront, but through that, we want to issue something.
Yes.
Up front for both phases. I got a little bit lost in the phases of the sewer connection and the phases of, and the phases of their fill out. It's all there, perhaps they're filled out in the first phase?
Yes. Phase one and phase two, part of that twenty seven six. Phase one and phase two for CST.
Yes, okay. So if if in the future they want to expand this?
Beyond phase two again.
Okay.
They would have that purchase more flow.
Okay.
If they need, if they were coming in a way low, it would really.
Yeah, right, okay. That's okay.
Yeah.
So this, it's unusual for Manchester to be allocating flow like this. It's been done in other communities separately, but this is first of all, I have nothing done where the project went on this before. But it's it's that unprecedented practice, it's just having to do.
You know, we can't express it to this size. It what?
Thank you for your question.
Um, yeah.
I know that select would approve the sewer and water easement agreement, the S Word Sewer Allocation Agreement, and escrow agreement, and so.
Second. John?
Yes.
Francis, yes, Kathy, yes, and Jeff, yes. Okay. Thank you. The next is. Budget updates, but I attempted to put off the budget updates for those and take up to people who are getting increasingly miserable. It's like what? The the first of the, of select planning board articles, proposed articles, of is just to remove. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Is to remove the current applicability of, of select site plan review and replace it with an entirely or significantly different section. This is section, section twelve point six point two to be removed, and twelve point, ending twelve point six point two. And I would suggest that in number three, change of use requiring five rather than fire. Certainly, right now, the site plan is, is, happens only if you have a project that's going to require five apartment spaces. That didn't seem, it seemed as if there were other actions that might generate a second.
Yes, that's, yes, for example. You can, but I need it out.
Just gonna ask you a little bit. The speaker will pick up a little better.
But for example, you could redevelop a site, again, property. Keep designing, relay it out, and then use it, gonna be firing more than five new spaces. Wouldn't have to go through site plan review to that, sorry. But in, but if, so, that's why we have the new one, bring in, so that you are redeveloping a site, adding on to the building, doing other variety of other changes for commercial purposes, it needs to go through site plan. So we have a little bit longer list, 'cause they picked up some specific things, add in for firing. So that's what we do.
No, it looks like they're trying to strengthen the site plan review process by adding other items that will trigger it. So, no reason. Yeah.
Yeah.
Was there any element, you obviously have to put this together so it would conform with the state requirements for ADUs that went through last June or July or whatever.
This, I think, does not touch on ADUs.
No, that's, no, you're right. Excuse me. Just site plan review. I mean, it touches on ADUs, but it touches on everything associated with the site plan.
Uh, it touches on anything that leads to commercial development.
Right.
Like a multi-family development, which is three units that are breaking.
But site plan, it was already required for, for all of them, yeah, anyways.
Uh, the code of site plan review by law, in one of the other particles, it can be removed. So site plan review will only happen currently with a special permit for larger than protected use ADUs, so.
Okay.
So that's, yeah, we do not have it specifically in here. We do have, it says, if another section of zoning by law requires a site plan review, then this section applies. So, so.
Yeah.
Those other sections, we have other things that it requires and.
Okay.
So, I mean, okay. We go to the next, what I thought was first. The, this is removing entirely the introduction to the zoning by law. The one comment that I got. I'm sorry, this is the order that there is. No, it's not. It's time, perfect. I'm trying to make it clear enough so that you can guess what we're talking. The one comment I've had on this is from Sarah Melish, pointing out that one of, that section eight is now incorrect. Which is another reason for removing it. Thanks.
Yeah, so so the, your introduction is, it's definitely laid out. First off, it's not required for the door and selling. Gives a little bit of history about when it was adopted, and then has some general requirements. It's basically reiterating statute, whether the statute may change, and you point out of the one about special permits, the other one, having to use it, uh, town meeting, adoption, selling, this requires two thirds. That's no longer the case for certain types of bylaws. And then the the second page of the, is is just information about other laws and things that you may have to do if you're doing sort of involvement. So again, it's not, it's something that could be revised and placed on planning board, but it's, I think, there's an informational piece for outlining how to, you know, try and get the zone changed, how the process works. What other laws could be targeted in development by law? So those are the things that add planning board, because they really should be in the zoning by.
So we don't have to change, have the town meeting vote every time state changes rules? And to get any information? Questions?
Okay.
Next. Is the ADU, the next two are what the state calls protected ADUs, and what we call standard ADUs, at-large ADUs. And I'm not the client.
So the state calls them protective ADUs, and so those are accessory dwelling units that have less than nine hundred square feet in any district where you allow some family home to be built. So we allow some buildings to be built in all our districts, with the exception of the LCD. So, so accessory dwelling unit up to nine hundred, we kept our data protected use. So what we've done is, because we want to proposing to allow something larger, it's been, like, just called them standards, instead of protecting that home like that term. And it's size, and then large size, large size, the next thing we'll talk about. Even like you did. Uh, so in order to make this work, we have to remove our existing definition, we have to have a new one. We have to change our capable use, and then we have to remove the section that is all the details about accessory apartments, which is ninety point one, some special housing provision in the bylaw. And then add new section for accessory dwellings, the new ninety point four. And that's what this bylaw can do. And you you can reasonably attach conditions, uh, few, um, what can be submitted for review, how you review it, uh, for accessory dwelling units, but it has to be within the scope of what the law allows.
Can I just back up a little bit?
Sure.
Are you? Um, so just as an introduction, and I think you all know that the state did pass a new law, which means that our current ADU law is not in balance. So similar to the other, we've gotta put something in place if we want to create something that helps Manchester. Otherwise, we can just ignore it, and whenever anyone applies for an ADU, they, you know, we have to say, well, our law's in balance, so go ahead. You know? So we tried to take the statute and put some guardrails around it that are allowed to hopefully take the best of the situation for our town. And that's what our standard ADU proposed by law is. We have to have them, they have to be allowed by right to still have some guardrails.
So my question, so I like the guardrails that you put in, like, for example, one of them was, I think, a minimum of six months. I think that's very important. My question is, I didn't see any specifics, and maybe doesn't belong in the bylaw, but operationally, we need to have it. Who's managing the inventory of ADUs? And if they are supposed to have a lease of, you know, a minimum of six months, operationally, how do you manage that? If something that's in our bylaw that cannot be operationally managed is a pretty useless bylaw. So I'm curious as to what other towns do, but we need to, we know we don't have a good inventory right now. And that's part of our issue. We need to have one, we need to manage it. And I just bring up the rental line, that was one operational condition. I I I'm not sure if there are others buried in here. I mean, a lot of what's in here is, you know, one-time check, the building inspector can look at it and ask you comply. But when there's something operational that needs to be managed, right? That has to be somebody's responsibility, who's gonna maintain the inventory? And and who's gonna make sure these people are living by, by the rules that we set up? Otherwise, they're not very useful.
Yeah, in terms of operation, in terms of the lease, I think, if what to require is the element to submit that in, at least on a annual basis.
Right, so, but where is that managed? And that'd be in the, that'd be your building inspector? But I think we don't have a good process and system for doing that right now, is my guess. So I think that's something that's operational, we need to strengthen. Talk more about it when we talk about our short-term rental laws, because they're all related.
So I don't know if that can be here, moving on down.
Yeah, that's hard to say.
So you may not be able to, you may not have an operational language in here, but if there's a penalty?
Well, the penalty would be a zoning violation. So let's say, yeah, you know, but, you know, he starts bringing it down on a weekly basis. You have the neighbor, and then you call the building inspector, he confirms that it's rotating past the characters every, every week, it's a zoning violation. So you would enforce it as you would any other zoning violation.
So where is the schedule of fines or punishments for zoning violations? And do we need something added specifically for these new use cases that we're adding to the zoning laws?
Well, it would be in our enforcement section of the zoning by law.
But that's what I'm asking, is there, is it in there that covers these operational scenarios? That if there's a violation, we have a real penalty?
There is a process, so it must be a penalty.
There is a process and penalty, and so is that, that's part of the regular zoning. Okay. And and those then looked at to see if they are sufficient to cure negative behaviors?
Yeah, it's a, it's a fine trade, yeah. Same street, the dollars, three hundred dollars, thirty three, was a part of it.
Yeah, John?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, to Kathy's point, this, well, no one's going on prospectively. But just like, I don't even know how many ADUs we think we have in town. I don't think anybody knows that. And if they, if we don't know, if some work isn't done or something, we'll, we aren't necessarily gonna discover them unless, I guess, neighbors ask, ask, ask about it. But I appreciate Kathy's questions along.
I think we wanna get away from the snitch model.
Yeah, you don't depend on that. I mean, it may happen.
Do depend on it today, and I, I.
Don't know what.
To get away from the snitch model, it doesn't work, and it makes people very.
Yes, these are neighbors. These are neighbors.
Okay.
Oh, good, so.
I've got a couple of detailed questions in nine point one point three, number one. It sounds slightly ambiguous, only one, I'm so, probably running into, will be permitted on a one or in a structure. Can you do both at the same time? Yeah, it's one of the one in the structure.
You can tell us.
That's not being said, obviously. Yeah, okay. Maybe that language could be strengthened, yeah. Um, then I, number nine, is the historic district commission. Should approve any changes to the exterior of the building? Can we put anything in the, give us a historic district commission oversight over the, a new exterior, pre-standing ADU?
um, exterior freestanding ADU?
Yes.
Unless there.
Well, well, not in the historic district?
No, in the historic district, a freestanding ADU. It would be nice if the historic district could have something to say about the exterior of it.
I think they can.
Of the building, which building is that? The existing building, if it's interiors or the new building, if it's exterior?
It's implied, right? Only applies to what? The ADU that's changing.
Yeah, so we can clarify that too.
The law does seem to allow that. You can establish design standards and dimensional standards that are more restrictive or different from what is required for a single-family residential home.
But it's on building design. Uh, one is put the ADU in the box. If it's clarified that, to make sure that. Actually might exist.
So just one suggestion for ease of absorption of information, um, because the documents are so content-rich. Um, whenever I see a list of more than five things, it screams for some type of categorization. You have things in here that are operational in nature, which are going to need constant monitoring, like accessory dwelling units shall not be leased for a period of less than six months, short-term rental shall not be permitted, no borders shall be a last, those are things that are operational, they're not one-time things that we check, right? Um, I would encourage you to, if possible, try and group these 15 items into things that might make it easier for people to absorb. So I just, whenever I see a laundry list of things like that, it, it, sometimes you can lose the, the impact of what you're trying to do. It's strengthen that to categorize, yeah, those connections.
And my other comment is just looking for clarification of why number 10 requires, that's actually one water meter for the main property dwelling and the ADU. As you know, we have a fairly oppressive, uh, system of water rates and having two families would likely put them in a higher category than having two meters. And.
I think the, um, original idea to require that they be the same as well as, um, number 11 which says accessory dwelling shall not be separated entirely from a primary unit, it's just to reinforce that so that you don't have two, um, commodities to do with, start with, they're all in one.
Hmm.
One, one.
So, so maybe it's a phrasing thing though, to your point, maybe you don't want separate water mains, okay, or lines or sewer lines, but having different meters is something that's very common even in rental properties, you know? I don't know if there's language that can be more precise to, you know, do what you're trying to do without, to Anne's point, you know, causing people to get really big water bills because everybody's on one.
I would think that, I would think that, I would think in owner's best interest. Because when I get big, uh, big water bills, then you should, uh, I protect the, uh, the children.
This, this is not allowed.
Not allowed to, yes.
Yeah. And I understand the thinking there that for electricity and heat, that can be anything. Somebody's lives at 90 degrees, that's their business, but they got to pay for that. Water, this is one property and the big driver is irrigation, which ain't happening with an ADU because the primary property owner is really kind of controlling what's going on there. So I understand with water, it can't go real crap, I mean, how long can you take a shower?
Oh, you'd be surprised.
I've had teenagers for a while, but still, it doesn't get up into irrigation numbers, but I think maybe that's the thinking that's going on here. I mean, a lot of properties, water is just one meter, but all of the other stuff is separate meters if they're rental properties.
Yes, yeah, usually that's.
But, but water is.
We don't want to get into cable and like, you know, y'all have to, have to owner pay for everything, but that's what, that was, I think, our thinking.
But I understand Anne's point, I mean, you know.
I think if there were a way to phrase it so that, you know, to your point, they're not adding, what's the right language? Trump, you know, is there some, you know, DPW language that can be used to prohibit adding, you know, extra piping there and just allow them to have separate meters? I don't.
Rick? Now that the, um, rental complex on Desmond Avenue, or I don't know. I have heard that they make a separate deal with the, the DPW because they have five or seven apartments all on one meter and, and the DPW calculates their water bill separately. I really don't, I don't like that, I don't like that.
Yeah, there are a few properties that are kind of like that in town.
Yeah.
I know Desmond is, is a lot of.
Yeah.
I'd like to speak to building essentials, all right? About 40% of the work, but in the regions, but, I mean, so the same line comes into the building.
Yeah.
But it brought six different water meters in, and now the tenant's responsible for their, uh, for life. So, I mean, it's just a matter of, uh, doesn't seem so complex.
Right.
From, from the same water, that's one, may.
Yeah, so. So, what, if I understand what we're looking for, um, since water and sewer are on the same meter essentially, that, that there be a single service, but can be separately metered?
Yeah.
Other questions on general standards? Your understanding that this will be a 50% vote? By, I guess, standard, right? The next is, um, accessory dwelling units large.
So the thought behind this one, you know, is this something the community wants or doesn't want? There are carriage houses already out there, those obviously are large, you know, there are, are, um, what would now be classified as maybe out there, um, it would require a special permit, um, apparently, um, it's something the town wants or doesn't. Grabbed a proposed regulation to put out there.
They have trace on this one and this is.
This would be by special permit, how the previous conditions would still apply to this. Um, and then there's two additional requirements.
The question that the one was in the.
Right, well, but I think the town. I, we, I basically have a few. Um, and, and one of my questions would be whether, um, I guess my first question is, is there's a significant definition on large with having sleeping, cooking, sanitary, and there's no equivalent on standard ADUs?
That's in the statute, I believe.
Is it different or a lot, so what's different, I was on the square footage.
Well, it's not quite.
Okay, so an ADU is not, uh, under the state statute is not required to have sleeping.
Oh, no, it is, it is, it is, yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's not the first one.
That's, I guess, that's the gist of my question, is what's the difference between what's in the state statute versus the large ADU, other than the size and the number of parkings?
Well, we can put restrictions on it, I mean, since it's not part of the state law.
So I guess I'm not clear on what.
So that, that person is basically the first instance of the definition of accessory dwelling unit in, in the statute or in the regulations.
Yes, okay, we don't want to, we've already gone, gone duplicating things.
We don't understand.
Okay, got it. There is no such definition for the standard because it's in the statute, we don't want to duplicate that.
Yes.
Got it, got it.
That's what I was trying to say.
And I assume that that includes A, which is the separate entrance? Okay, yes. It, the thought just went through my head and it's probably stupid, um, why not make it, um, the half the gross, um, floor area or 1,500 square feet, which I was larger.
I was curious as to what, what's the whole special about 1,500 square feet? That's a small house, that's a starter home.
So if you have 6,000 square foot, which we have probably.
Several.
Number of them, that, uh, then you could do a 3,000 square foot accessory dwelling.
Second.
Which is really a second, not quite the purchase of what.
Okay, but, but.
I mean, I think the intent here is, uh, mentioned is like a lot of carriage housing property, so.
Yeah, and just, just.
Just like a, an apartment above the garage is okay for 900 square feet, but you have a lot of carriage housing, second story is 1,500 square or 1,400 square feet, why, why should they have to have only 900 square feet to have a backspace?
Yeah.
That would, they would, they would do something without permits now and, yeah, so.
Um, right. But there's no management to this.
Right.
Okay. Um, is this something that the town can debate on? We, there will be hearings on this and we can hear from people other than me.
So the accessory dwelling unit, we actually posted for public hearing to get, to just get, since that's the one that will be a lot of discussion on for March 10th. And we also, uh, we did not post all of these because we will hold official public hearing uh, after we submit the final documents of the placard, before, um, after March 10th. Um, so, we'll be holding one on March 10th for the two, the three dwelling and associate dwelling.
So where did the 1,500 come from? Is that just a
It's.
Nice sounding number?
I guess so.
Okay.
Before we went back.
If someone asks a question.
Similar to your discussion, um, and.
Okay.
And no management.
And I think under 9.1.3, number one is a little, could be worded better. A unit may be within attached to or in an attached accessory structure. Um, so you've got an accessory structure within an accessory structure?
Okay. We'll work on that.
I think you need to reference to the primary somewhere in there to distinguish. It's. John, do you have any?
This section, good.
Kathy, Brian, yeah. All right. And here we get to what? Over here.
One, I'm afraid saying what's happening about that.
So the flood plain by law, and it's something I personally was working on until in 2023 and this requires updating it. But, uh, the, um, email announced that we're going to be updating that as well for communities. Um, so I believe, and I'm totally sure, and I'm, I think that's what I'm holding until such time as the final map. The thing you have to go back to town meeting and read about is final map. So, uh, we now have a deadline as to all communities, at least in the charter election, which we're in, of July, to have adopted. So, um, these are a bylaw which you need to adopt, there's, um, various things we have to fill in in order to make it, uh, comply with the requirements. Um, and we modify it and all we, uh, have to add and remove, um, a few flood zones that we, that we find here as well. So, and we have to reference the final maps, and the final maps haven't, um, I see an email this afternoon, so I leave with a link to what might be the final map. I hope they will have them for the, I think we're meeting on March 10th. So right now they're floundering stage, however, we are not allowed to adopt floundering. Send emails to the state agencies, um, the whole timing that we hit, and so, uh, they promised we would have final maps. So I just checked those maps to make sure they are labeled finally. Yeah, it's, it's similar to the, um, the.
Stormwater, yeah, I was just wondering if there was some way that we could put a structure around this as we did with the stormwater regulations, so that an authority is established and the control of the regulations is given to a body that is not the town meeting. Um, which is what we did with the stormwater.
This proves that a town meeting, the stormwater.
The, the, the structure, the structure around it was approved at town meeting. The actual regulations are separated.
So when town meeting approved, was authorized in the DPW to propagate regulations?
Oh, yeah, I think this is, this is one, one dying, yeah. This is how they wanted it, um, this.
So it required to be in the some, that's.
Like the last town council. Yeah, that might be my question, the town council, see if they can, just.
They're pretty, they're pretty clear, maybe to adopt this if you're, and again, remember it's for for, uh, so that people, you know, can, like.
Yes.
So they.
I, I. I I then.
We don't adopt with them.
You don't understand, it's just, so some of our folks were available to have detailed regulation propagated by basically now is town meeting. But as long as they're authorized by town meeting to do so.
What's the question?
This is the sort of thing that turns people off town meeting. And it's the sort of thing that comes back to town meeting every time the regulations get changed.
And it was basically a conversation. Obviously, the narrative required change at the beginning, but it was 425 pages. And let professionals boil it down to, um, bonus points.
Yeah, so so the regulations that this would provide is either the building code or building in flood.
So what's really changing is the.
Yeah, and various other a lot more verbiage, um, from the districts here and other special things, but eventually, um, the regulations are are building codes, which actually on building and flood.
But this is allowing.
Providing to.
About some communities, I mean, this is a problem.
But you can prohibit use and uses of flood money.
So is this doing that? It's getting it the way it is today?
Well, it's not the way it is today, but.
How is it different from the way it is today?
This is where I was where I was told.
Yes.
You need the, you need the pithy one pager that says this is what is.
What's changing? Yeah. Okay.
It's not on the floor?
Or.
Well, half of 70 foot.
Oh.
Yes.
Either now or. Be either now or a town meeting. Okay. Okay. So. So what I understand is that you will check the town council and see if there's some way that we can structure against the stormwater structure so that um.
The meeting delegates responsibility for.
Yeah, exactly. Right.
Not optimistic, but they certainly weren't asking.
Um, and the other is that there will be a one page, maybe one page, two sides description of what this actually means. Okay. Okay, and the next one, um, is associate numbers. And the stuff that vote is places where there was disagreement how they should be done. But John, you have.
I'm trying to recall, this is a discussion a year ago.
Yeah.
And I don't know how, what we settled, did we not settle? I thought it was a joint.
So I think, I think for your last visit, you had talked about how these were a joint.
Right.
So I think I'm trying to go to this.
For all three of them, there was differences, which is why we posted this public hearing. Like when we live and give feedback to the public or oh, not the final, on the campus.
Events of the past year have convinced everyone except I think one person that we need at least one associate member.
Yeah, you have, you have an election and a prejudice.
Yes.
And huge matters, you know, and matters that require multiple elections. And a year like that won't for a while, but what happened?
So what was the idea against having two? What was the?
Let's see, what I'm trying to remember an argument.
Well, one of, one of the things is that's not a high level of activity. Thank words, so most things are so. So having one extra member means some flexibility in case of conflict, some has to downs, some misses, and probably needs. So one seemed reasonable. Um, so some people wanted to just, you know, kind of build some suspension just to make sure that never without not people program special department.
Well, I mean, this past year, as in the situations where you you lost two, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay. Conflict, health, I don't know, a bunch of different things. Um, the odds have been happening.
So I think, um, you know, my thought is that, you know, planning board is certainly a great check of a board. Um, you get into a lot of, um, specificity that I I support the need for an associate member, an alternate, like have an alternate on a jury. Um, it it's been my experience that when trying something new like this, it might be good just to take a baby step and start with one alternate and then see how that works. You know, you'll you'll get it sent pretty quickly as to whether or not that person is, you know, how often they're needed and whether or not it's enough. So I think my suggestion would be just start small, start with one. Rather than go put a tune right away.
Now, is it, this is a person that's really going to attend all of the meetings because you don't know when that person's going to have to step in.
Well, it's similar to the C B A, they're a smaller board. They're appointed, um, but they have two associates. So some people thought I should, the C B A have two and we only have one, but we have more members.
He has seven, right?
He has seven, right, right, yeah.
So I mean, nine person board is like a.
That's a lot of people.
That's a lot, yeah.
Where would you have said?
We have to stop at seven, I'm not just. It's all a little different. So the C B A, they just sit on people here.
Right.
Right.
So they're not coming every meeting. And we, uh, not once, look, when my son gets older, sometimes we'd get a phone call, hey, so and so can't make it. So first of all, didn't show up, all right, on the, um, S L B. Right, yeah, I think it was called Perfume or whatever it was, I mean, uh, but I think everyone showed up just in the odd chance it sent me down. But for the most part, it's, uh, you know, Sarah will tell or someone will call. Sarah always pulls the board, will we be able to make it, we be able to make, yeah, maybe, then I guess as opposed to the, you know, ongoing process. So it's a lot, yeah, simpler and it's it's not time, it's time to.
My inclination is like the planning board have a hearing and come to its own decision. I I think it's not, there are great interests to a select board when they have one or two or.
The other ones you have to manage.
Yeah.
I think at least one's a good idea.
Yes.
One, two.
But it will be a joint decision.
Yeah, that that's what I was gonna say. It's gotta be a joint decision because the planning board, when we appoint members to the planning board itself, that is a joint decision, right? And I think we don't think we want to deviate from that for an associate member.
No, but I'm I'm in favor of one. I think you're putting a big demand on people because in fact they have to be pretty much at every meeting because you don't know what's going to filter down to an eventual vote of some sort. And that's hard, that's hard.
Yeah.
Find two people. So I I would shoot for one and.
Well, maybe just open up a two would just be satisfying because the problem problem is finding one that is doing.
Yes.
You know, and that's going to be, that's going to drive the engine right there.
I think that's all of them.
Is. Well. Thank you very much. Thank you. They comment.
Point.
Thank you. If you if you could stay, it might be fascinating.
Okay, uh, we skipped the F point 26. Just like this. It's already letting people. Oh, my God.
Well, that's an invention for them. I'm saying this is quite good. It's what it's plus. That's capital, upbringing, capital. Set up for March 3rd, have a training. Friends committee, review more detail, but for damage and to convert. Plus, it includes some of the initiatives of the other, with the community that regional. So right now, if you have everything, the school budget, like 5.4% increase. Which is not, you know, kind of the health insurance situation. They have about 3.1% of the. Because that planning board is school. And school budget, I'm sorry, I I'm a smoker. Um, but 5.4, it's coming in at about two and a quarter. And with the increase, it's six percent range. So for Manchester, seven, seven and a half percent overall. Manchester will be closer, I'm sorry, be closer to seven percent for Manchester. Let me back up. So two numbers, I assume. Let me be clear. Uh, so after a school budget increase of about 5.4% overall, this translates to a 4.8 for Manchester. The overall budget increase for capitals is coming in about two and a quarter. If you have a budget for the school, that accommodates the full probably seven percent hike health insurance, which is the one they have on their current cure. Uh, that translates to 6.8% hike for Manchester, driving our total tax increase up to about 3.1%.
That's the mid-range budget, this, uh, this call?
Yes. Yes.
That 6.8 Manchester is translates to what for the school budget?
7.5.
7.5. Okay.
Essex, that's so.
At 6.8.
So the big, the big issue here is school. Also there is outside, but general, this is the big issue for certainly the school. So there is a private sector, any of the, you know, the. Who can be, I didn't mean on the sixth. About two, about three scenarios. Is it with the service that is out there? What's now represent this mid-range, which should have their final health insurance numbers by their. Their sense of this. This week. It's in areas for the health insurance. Be shocked, it was less than 12%. They will get that 27 back, close to 20.
27s.
Was that?
27 seems crazy.
But it's, uh, but even some buyer people who dated that 26, 25, 26. But the buying because the buffer is not how they have the highest was was 2%.
So it's 20% result of a 7.5% increase.
No, I've got assumed a full 27.
A 7.5 assumed before 27, okay.
What, do you know what percentage of their overall budget, I try to look at this, I can find it. What percentage insurance is of their overall budget?
Don't know.
No, you you pocketed the right thing, Jeff.
I tried to find it, I can't, I didn't see it.
The cross of the problem that.
You have to take it out. There's the spreadsheet as, as the health insurance, as as on my head up, I have taken it out.
But I think the biggest issue that was discussed two, at least two, like three years ago, was that you have declining enrollment. Costs are still going up exponentially, right? So you have a structural problem. Okay, your fixed costs are too high for the amount of customers that you serve. And so when you're in this kind of situation, there typically has to be a discussion, a painful discussion about restructuring and that was, they were supposed to have a strategic planning session one summer. We had one of these difficult budget years, I can't remember if it was 22 or 23. Um, they committed to that. We can find out evidence of that happen. But until we deal with the structural issues, you're just dying by a thousand cuts. You know, you're just, they're cutting what they can from the variable costs. But but the problem is that you're serving to our people, you still get the same fixed costs. So there's some real structural, um, it's painful discussion, but I'll, you know, I'm going to continue to die by a thousand cuts. We told, somebody's willing to have that conversation. I don't know if it influenced that, right, but I I tried to go back in my notes to find the exact meeting where the school district and the school committee committed to holding strategic planning sessions during the summer. It was either 2022 or 2023 and nothing happened. And and that to me is why we are, you know, again.
Meeting on February 26th. Is that a meeting of the
The school, it's really of the finance, something for the school.
Y'all.
Was, was invited to the government of the, they, and I think that they were suffering. So it's, um, so you and Sarah, you're concerned, it's definitely finance committee.
You and Brendan.
Yes, um, and two from the Essex. Finance committee and two from the school.
Right.
So those are, that's the core team. So those are, that's the core team. Which is decided to to, to open the people to, to, to. If we can post it as a question, like what maybe, what is you might to attend. To have the call. Do discussing. So this is the twenty sixth and ten AM, at Essex now. Of their of their surveying space. So our best to go forward. The daily school committee, it's administration, preparing. Deputy scenarios. Including what the school looks like. If indeed, if the student is seeing in concert. If you do. Have a budget that avoids over space. Restructuring that.
Right, the problems in the future going down the road, you get lots of you're gonna be looking at school, you're gonna be looking at you know, teachers and contracts and what other contracts they have, I mean, this is you know, it may run away trading fast. It already is.
It already is.
I mean, it already is, but it's, you know, a little scheme ahead, I, I don't know.
I think that's why that plan was so important.
Right, you gotta well, believe me, I'm all for education, but you know, it works on someone.
The, I think what people have spying is biggest voting block is seems. And people are gonna be surprised. Both sides, both towns, as to how many people will vote against. A major run rate. So I think Kathy can sell. She's trying to cut from the other side. Because I don't think it's
This is, this problem is not going to ever get better in restructure. And I did find in my notes from twenty twenty three. The last time a major strategic structuring conversation took place, I think it was twenty twelve. I mean, it's long overdue. For them to have a strategic discussion about the structure of the district. And this, you can't solve problems like this long term without having those very painful discussions. Especially, you know, if enrollment was going up, the discussion would be totally different. But that, if your fixed costs are going, you know, are changing and your enrollment's going down, it's mess.
So they have, they have vanished over the last eight years because of dropping your, like, eliminating positions.
Yeah, variable costs, okay, and you can only cut that so far.
No, that's fixed costs for teachers, right?
Well, it's proportion to, I, I, I face off things like buildings and, you know, real, you know, contracts of a long term. Things you can't change, I know, but letting go of personnel is, is a variable cost, you know, you can make those decisions.
Sure.
But my concern is it's a big, and we're talking about a new building, I mean, you know. We've got to have some tough conversations about the true fixed cost here. And I know there's another, so then the contracts, the teachers' contracts, was it next year? Well, our financial boundaries put on that discussion, you know. You know, other towns have gone through some very painful things we don't want to go through. But at the same time, we don't give them a blank check. So I just think there's got to be some cooperation between finance committees and whoever does the negotiating on those contracts. I feel like perhaps the last contract negotiation, I don't know how closely, you know, that was worked out through the incomes. It wasn't, it's not.
Right, so I didn't know for sure, but, but school is an independent entity.
I understand it's an identity, but we are all of this together.
Right.
Right, and if we weren't a district, then, you know, you'd have tighter control, obviously, but there's got to be some financial contract negotiations because, yeah.
It said, yeah, on the twenty sixth, there's gonna be a discussion, I'll come up with a couple of scenarios. One of which will be fitting within proposition two and a half.
They can present this.
From some person's perspective, Essex's perspective.
Or Manchester's perspective.
But that's always the the lowest, the bottom, the bottom. And is that going to probably involve one-shot solutions, which is the last shot that we have?
So we have the issue of
Or you, or you don't know?
Well, they, they will I think the goal is to present, you know, three or four years. Each scenario.
So that would be interesting.
Definitely.
However, again. As enrollment continues to go down, if they are not willing to have a strategic plan and a structural conversation about restructuring. And those three and four-year plans are really, how much are we gonna keep going up, you know, every year, it's
So, so the dynamic is what a player is Essex will not entertain any discussion of not having a six element of teaching.
That's okay, but it doesn't have to be identical to Lori.
Sure, that would be.
Well.
K through six, K through
K through what, K through two, okay? You know, there are different structures and might, you know, we might need to open up the agreement, whatever. But if people are interested in saving they have these discussions. But breaking, breaking water and land is, it's just like
I see. District needs to think about expanding what the district is. Supervise the union with another town or the district.
Absolutely.
Conversation with Rockford.
Rockford. The small
Well, they bring them in, if Rockford comes into the district.
Those are the types of structural changes that they should be discussing in a, what's their strategy, right? AP classes, if there's only five kids in an AP chemistry class, are we, are we, you know. Combining our AP classes with other towns, you know, what are we doing strategically? And I just have these, maybe if they have those discussions in a long, they're pointing in the right direction, I don't, and I can't find.
Yeah, that was a class meeting a year ago. At the high school. Everyone saved my French, I didn't know that people were Frenchy going. I took French at the other times. Which I forgot for, the, you know, so there there's Kathy's point, and looking at some things, you know.
So, so what I remember from that meeting though. Every single parent, child, and teacher begged to keep their programing. Not one. Not one individual talked about a building, I don't have a nice building, I don't have a nice athletic fields. They didn't mention those things at all. It was all, I want my, I want my humans, I want my teachers, I want these programs so I can get into, you know, a good college if that's my career path. No, it was about the humans, and my concern is the budget is just gonna have the difficult conversations.
I am concerned. I carry things here that I haven't heard been through the school. I would like you great to suggest to have that members of the finance committee in school and slide board for a present should be allowed to speak. I mean a strong opinion of not being allowed to speak, it's not a way to find a solution.
No, it's very frustrating.
Yep. Yep.
Maybe the twenty sixth isn't the time to do it, but it's before.
It's way late, it's already way late.
Yeah, it's almost March.
Yeah. It's two days from March until twenty sixth, so, yeah.
You know, do the news more. It's not getting slow.
So are you guys publishing an agenda for the twenty sixth meeting?
I think the agenda is going to be something like
Open discussion.
School budget looking forward.
Not just this for your twenty sixth.
No, not just for but, but understanding is to be built as some communities be, others may observe. So it's okay, yeah.
It's not your decision.
It's a minority votes, so. That position was very strong, just to be so. So that's correct, reporting to
Don't be recorded online.
Sorry.
Will it be online or
It'll be hidden.
And, and reported?
Yes.
I'm trying to say that.
It, it's when, when came, so this is recording, so. We've recovered.
Okay.
So, yeah. We try to set up a special meeting that the school committee. Maybe not.
It can hurt.
And if we always do it, yeah, citizens of Manchester, trying. And schools is not, then it's on the house.
So, but
So maybe not June.
Yeah. No, I, I
Like, so, so the meeting on the we actually, whenever this committee comes up with scenarios, because I've got a hand. And then perhaps on the floor, if they're ready to meet, they could how we're gonna get into a conversation. With both towns.
Or, I had asked, was there been appetite from Essex, uh, was like
Yes, I would like to think.
I'll try to think the same, right, what we have here is, last example, two parents fighting and the kids are getting hurt. Okay, and we gotta pull it together, with the kids. So, yeah, I'm sorry, yes, I just got simplify this a bit. That's the way I like kids taking out the house.
Actually, I think, I, I would hope that the Essex select board will understand that I, I think they have some support on this, for helping to keep the costs down. And having whatever conversations are necessary to work on the structure of the district to make that happen.
I'd say the conversation today is, was in Essex, the message is, we're spending too much. Your class sizes are too small.
This, this light board, the school board members in Essex are both?
No, I'd say the light board in finance.
Okay, I know finance, yeah, yeah.
So I think sometimes
But they'll see some of their, out of, of their case.
But then they're gonna give somewhere else, but I guess, the, I think how we talk about what how we talk about things in the language that we use, either helps further the conversation or set it back. So I just don't want them to have the perception that Manchester is just encouraging spending because we can. I don't think that's the position of great education for the kids, but we, we're kind of physically responsible way of doing it, and how they understand it.
And the other thing too is, you know, build a school in Essex, that's gonna make you build, this school will bigger than what you need.
Exactly.
And your population is going down, you're gonna end up with two half the elementary schools, that's doesn't make sense.
I think this is not a conversation that you should have in the passport in middle of a select, uh, school, that's, school committee meeting. The school committee is very adamant, they start at six, end at eight thirty, and people leave, even with with special COVID. I think we need a separate date for this, and I was going to say March sixth, which is a Thursday. And they will object that they don't have
Because back on the, our joint meeting with Ben on March third. Second, focus on the numbers, et cetera, I, I think we, I would like to make sure we are discussing the proposed headcount increases. The additional hours or additional FTEs, whatever, I think we need to have a specific conversation on, on the rationale for that. So I'm not saying
Okay, we had some of the time meeting articles. And I didn't see. And what are the articles that are likely to come? Or may come.
I think it fell off my email, the one you sent me on the last year, you know, our email is cleaned out every thirty days. I tried to look for it, would you mind me saying that? I also, based on the conversations we had at the Connect three fifty one. Oh, for instance, I think Kate Cott is further along in the thinking on short-term rentals, like Providence, uh, Providence Town. Oh, for instance, I think Kate Cott is further along in the thinking on short term rentals like Providence, uh, Province Town. They really got it nailed, so I I tried to pull that off the whip. And it, I I was trying to compare it to the last one, I couldn't find the last one, but I think the Province Town one is streamlined. It felt smaller and easier to read, but they had a real bad problem there with losing affordable housing, losing housing.
Yeah.
Um, and I think they maybe had their.
On on the noise, do you know what. Self signaling is currently doing? Have they following the eight o'clock?
You're sorry, you don't.
All right, Liz Walker. Not this time. Said she's recently happy. Maybe somebody could reach out to to the self signal and see if they there. They have a problem before we spend a lot of time solving the problem.
I think the only thing I would make sure we take a look at though is the repercussions for not adhering to what we're doing today, we want to do.
Yeah.
We talked about the fines may just be.
Besides, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's not, I think we need to readjust the fines, that's part, you know. That's a cost to our business. I mean, if we really want to have a consequence, there should be a consequence.
Well, either fines or loss of permits.
Or loss of permits, yeah, some some sort of consequence, it's real.
Yep, and probably also what. Yep, if we decide that this is something we need to take up now. The list of things that are considered noisy is a little odd.
Yes, yes, we want to get that right before this stuff, we should, we'll be there, but yes.
Well, I mean, this would affect all construction.
Yeah, or landscaping.
So, I mean, it's one of those culvert stacks, that's gonna be.
That's different. It's gonna be right people's living room, but that's covered in the, anything that's town oriented. I think.
There's a separation.
There's a separation for emergency.
Yeah.
People don't like it when, because. It's a waiver and others don't.
Well, that's yet to be determined as to when the timing is on all of that.
You said, mentioned sidewalk clearing, could remember that word used.
Got a question about that. Can we put on the website what sidewalks are normally cleared by the town? I know we've got a list somewhere.
So they drew a picture with color coded lines. I have to say the graphic is not entirely accurate. So they need to take another look at it. And I think we want to. Understand the period of performance, I guess. I mean. You know, if they try and clear a sidewalk three days after the storm, when it's all iced over, it's gonna be like, still like, you know, surfacing a moon. So there. So I think. You know, I think we're just gonna get a little crisper on what we're asking the DPW to do. And is the budget we are going to afford for them to find what they need in order to accommodate that. And specifically, I'm wondering about the equipment. You hear a lot of rumors, you know. Oh, I can't clear Lower Karin Street because the sidewalk is too narrow. When? Somehow they found a way to do it this year. I'm very happy about that. But so there's a lot of urban legend around sidewalk clearing, you know, do they have the right equipment? Are they just pushing the snow or actually removing it? So I think when we discuss our budget. We want to understand, what do we want the sidewalks to look like downtown? And is it just downtown? I hear like Ocean Street or. In that area, you know, other features have sidewalks, will be supposed to be cleaning those on Sun Street or whatever. Is it just the downtown? So what's the expectation? Does the budget cover what we say we're gonna do?
Well, wasn't tired of this, though, having all of this responsibility in front of the house.
That that's, that's often the solution, but at least in my experience, some people do it, some people don't. Nobody gets the 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 regular, well, by the way, it's not enforced. And and.
Firstly, I'm not really a fan of it.
Yeah, I I I think if we do follow the things that Catherine's been talking about. What are the areas, what is the equipment needed?
What is the actual, what the expectations are, and and then make sure, you know, the DPW will do it.
Right, like my road, sometimes, some years it's done, some years.
Yeah, it's a crapshoot. Yeah, and that's what bothers people.
Is it on the map?
It's a crapshoot. Mine's on the map and it's a crapshoot.
Yours is on the map, and I I I know it was described to me, has has a map actually actually been put on the website now?
It was, it was on, it was on social media, that's why I saw it.
Okay, all right, social media. I think we ought to put it up there and see what happens. I've had inquiries over the past three months from three people. But it's all been areas that are covered by snow plowing or by by sidewalk plowing here. It hasn't been somebody way out on Summer Street that says, hey, how come nobody's plowing? It's all been in general, in town, sorts of activities.
And I think it's a cultural thing here. I have to, you know, this is the first place I lived, really, really care at the whole or other property where it's not. Where I did sidewalk in front of the house, or this concept of the town doing it as a good thing, and people actually do it. If the businesses wanted people to come at this door, my father was out there with a snow blower and he cleared, okay, yeah, absolutely. And in neighborhoods, yeah, were, okay, yeah, because it was part of the culture. And and some cities do a ticket, like it's Cambridge or some, you don't clear your.
Yeah.
Yeah, some people don't, but.
But I, you know, but again, it's culture, so there's, maybe, maybe.
We could work on, rather than. Having a firewall this year, start by working, make sure that the expectations are right, and then start, and then start.
Yeah, setting out the message, being a good citizen. Yeah, exactly, agree. I I think we just have to be really clear on, to your point. What is the DPW gonna do, or what do they know? And despite the, what was wrong, it's put on social media, it's still not clear.
But there's nothing on the town website.
Well, I didn't look to see if that same drawing was on the town website.
Okay, I would like to see that up there on the DPW, so.
And whatever they put out there, they gotta do, it's gonna be consistent.
It took me a while before the season starts, if you ask me, just even.
Right, I mean, some towns actually publish a list of streets, this is phase one, this is phase two. You know, you'll do this twenty four hours after the storm, forty, you know, you know, so towns have a different way of setting expectations, but.
I just, I don't wanna get into a problem, I mean, we are an engaging community, I don't wanna get into a situation where we have ugly people shoveling sidewalks.
Or you have five different contractors shoveling on the same block, right? You know, because every, party's same, so I think in the, you know, congested areas, it makes sense.
driveway and bowls of stuff.
Exactly, it makes sense for the town to do a certain area, but they need to do it. They they don't.
Put this on, on the discussion, let's, the next meeting, I mean. That's, there's, we could talk to each other, but we need to have Chuck, or sorry. The senior center bond, how do we feel about that? The discussion has been that the senior center will be built out, built out with donations. But wait until we have all the donations in hand before we do anything. The seniors are all gonna be dead.
A little bit.
If we take a bond and the donations don't meet payments, then the town is on the hook for it.
I think he would, you know, so, so time. Say, say we, we ask for voters to approve a bond, this coming time. Soon it gets approved. The design work will be taking place from April through September. Council basically get fundraising underway in a beautiful way in September. We're using the time between now and then to do the late work, plan it out, identify team donors. And so quite, it's, which will, you know, probably isn't. And so I think you, so, so, design work completed by September, October. Until there, October, maybe by the first year, we have a contractor, we have a firm trust. Or by the same time, we wanna know how successful we fall fundraising. That point, you can decide to go forward with the project or not.
It's just, do we need money to start created from the spring town meeting to do the design? Or could this be a fall town meeting if I?
No, you would need it for the, the spring.
So so it's not just authorizing the bond, we'll take out the bond before we now have a, a reason to.
But the design, the design will be separate.
Yeah, so, design, well, you could use a portion of the bond of the simpler to to just appropriate those dollars. So, for example, the, we had money in the capital budget for for library, windows. And that might be much lower, and CDC is covering the costs. You can take those same dollars and use it for the design work.
Okay, so that, that money's out there.
The money's there, I mean, obviously.
Just need to pre allocate.
It wouldn't affect.
I'm all in favor of pulling a bond to get in the same problem, but. I guess one of my questions is, do you think if people know there's a bond out there, would they be less likely to donate?
Right, yeah.
And maybe you see issue goes away.
Then the town is on the.
They're not, they should, right? For that question a lot. We used the example of Boston, like, they did, it's a thirty million dollar project. China, like, you know, the city was front of the, where they were true above. It's fully fundraising. Still, still, you know, they study constructions.
People also see, people see. If the, if the, if the construction really starting and it's real. I think you'll find that fundraising is done correctly, the work, and so it's, it's. As Ray mentions, the, you know, library. Who's working with a group, putting out. The YCA, this is quite many years ago. At that point, nasty, I think, was thinking of the, the run. So fundraising, construction, and the town will be, and go here with the entire debt. So it's incumbent upon us to maintain the sense of urgency to get this done.
I would wanna know what the fundraisers think.
That's a good question.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
So, you know, I say, hey, have you gone through situations where people have put a bond out there before and now you're fundraising in that? In that atmosphere?
So the answer is yes, they have, they've done it both ways.
Well, I wanna know what they're thinking.
Do you have to, I mean, you've got the money to do the design. Why do we, they still don't understand why we have to buy the bond in the spring, you know, versus.
You could go to the fall.
Yeah.
You've got the money.
I I'm.
Maybe that'll get people excited if I.
I think no matter what the, I mean, realistically, you're gonna have to pull it all on, if you wanna do it, thanks.
You need the bottom, you're gonna, you're not gonna have all the money, you're gonna have pledges over years, you know, people are gonna donate differently. So to, to sign that contract for the construction, we're gonna need that money. But when you do the bond in the spring, fall.
Not gonna spend the money.
Now, bond would not be.
Yeah.
Low rate. It's just permission to do so.
Just permission, it's, I think it, it gives a really positive sense to prove it super well.
I agree, I, I, it's one of the things.
And if you know you're not gonna actually obtain the bond to a secure money, then. I think it's a big risk doing an earlier running rate.
And again, to the point, seniors have been hearing is being kicked down the road for ten years.
A long time.
Okay. Okay, and the fact that. They approved it unanimously last year for the purchase, we're almost there for the PNS, should have PNS, okay? And I think that. It shows our commitment to the seniors as well. And it's nearest commitment to the seniors as well. And there's, I, there's, there's no downside to, to. In the spring, and, well, in the, in the spring, there's no downside.
But your message is to be clear, that you approved the bond, so that when we have demonstrated successful fundraising, you can proceed.
And maybe that's the words.
So maybe you could clarify what successful fundraising means. You know, at what point, how much money do you have, what percentage, what percentage of the. Estimated project cost do we need to collect via fundraising? So put some of.
Yeah, so. Seventy five percent, is it eighty percent?
Right, say that way.
Right.
Whatever it is, but I think we need to be crisp about when we pull the trigger, so to speak, on actually spending the money.
Was the original intent of this was to be a hundred percent through fundraising?
Yes, to build out, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to. Purchase, purchase by town funds of the construction.
Construction would be a hundred percent.
For duration.
And that's still the case.
Yeah, still.
No, I'm just wondering what the expectation was for the.
Oh, the, the, what we mentioned, and this is what I'm hearing about, is that until the voters last year, that those are going to be fundraised. Now we change. That profile for them. I think it was due to a lot of things, including rising construction costs. Waiting two years for a fundraising. And then starting to break ground, talking for, what, four years before people are gonna occupy the space. As opposed to, why can't you do construction and fundraising come. So, to, maybe, by next, by groundbreaking, we have to have, by anticipating groundbreaking, that we have to have fifty or sixty or seventy percent of the funding there.
You gotta give them some targets, otherwise the town's gonna wind up. Or in majority, so, you know, the town will authorize, how authorizes the bond in the spring. And the fundraising cannot actually take your money, so.
So you, you, as the slide board, have that final say of.
To when?
When you pull the line.
Okay. Instead, I just think we should specify that as part of the warrant, part of what our intention is. So whatever, you know, I look for your guidance, Greg, and what an appropriate target is, like groundbreaking, you know, that, right?
We lost the professionals.
Absolutely, but I think that's needed to show the residents that, hey, we're really not gonna spend your money. Once we've been, you know, this successful with the fundraise.
What would the terms of the bond be?
Well, before we show town, so that we can clear the lot. Typically, construction bond is thirty years.
And you can pay that off early without penalties.
Right.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
With snow removal, we're gonna talk to the, to the DPW and make sure everybody understands. And try and get the word out that if you were good for some, you shovel your lawn. And try and get the word out that if you were a good person, you discovered your warranty. The noise. There are always going. One thing we don't wanna do is put a lot of effort into a bylaw that isn't needed, a bylaw change that isn't needed. Make sure that that, we can come up with something, if we come up with something, it should meet the needs of CST and. Right. And with a short term rental, we're gonna look to get the information from Gloucester and from its town and.
We'll see if there's a few, some definitely.
Maybe. Yeah. The Gloucester one seems complicated to go on.
Yeah, yeah, that's why I was looking for others.
Yeah. Okay. It sounds like the annual town meeting. The draft. Operational audit. We'll be talking about it at our next meeting with the, if you didn't. But on the additional comments.
I thought it was good. When, the only real question I had was pairing up the harbor master with the fire department.
Yeah.
I don't think that's gonna work.
I don't think it is.
Okay.
I think it's better if we just call it a public thing.
And the harbor should be its own.
Right.
Yeah. Its own pair, I don't think it should be paired with.
But who does, who does it report to?
To the town administrator.
So I think, I think, you know, the. It seems like the operational lot is certainly very focused on organizational structure. And he made some suggestions, some of which we may want to encourage the next town administrator to adopt. Others we may wanna dissuade, you know, he or she from adopting, but ultimately. We are expecting a new leader to come in here and that person ought to have a say in, you know, how this is kind of a information gathering. For that new person, so they can. Give some leg up on the thoughts, but I, I, I was a little disappointed that it was. Didn't focus very much on the services that we provide and whether or not we have any underutilized services. And they mentioned introducing technology more, but I, I'd like to see more specificity here. Where, which departments? When they start talking about adding the utility department, my red flag goes up the right way. Anything that is compliance based, departments that we have that are essentially. The same in every town and city because we are trying to comply with state or federal laws, we're not unique. We should be automating the heck out of it, but are you doing with other towns? We should not be adding headcount without a real thorough understanding of why. So those are kind of red flags to me. And like I said, I was a little disappointed that they didn't. Go a little bit more into the services that we're providing, whether or not they saw opportunities for, you know, streamlining the services and personnel. So that was, that was kind of.
I looked at it and again, like Kathy said, yeah, very organizational oriented, my first reaction is that. We're very lucky. We've worked on a shoestring here for I don't know how long, and nobody's been hit by a bus. Or died or anything like that, everything has pretty much worked. And the organizational proposal that's been put together is really. An insurance policy against some disaster hitting because we've got nobody to step into a lot of these roles, some disappears. Un, un, unplanned, if I ask a question.
Yeah, so, so that's different though, succession planning doesn't mean hire from within, and that's my, my disagreement with the author of the document.
They.
Because when you're dealing with departments that are compliance based, you know, the accounting, the town clerk, everybody in every town does the same stuff, okay? There's not necessarily unique expertise in Manchester, so you can hire from the outside, like we just did with our town clerk. You know, so the, you don't duplicate headcount for the purposes of succession planning unless it is a rather unique role. That Manchester, you know, would have a hard time filling, you know, even if they're not supposed to remain visible.
Yeah, well, I mean, I don't think we operate a whole lot differently than the Gwynnons for the Essexes, for the Rowleys, the world.
Oh, we're very different from Essex, yes we are.
That's the lesson.
Oh, it's all totally operational in every.
But, you know, I mean, we've got, got departments of want. We tend to have departments of want. And the suggestion is, let's spend upwards of a half a million dollars, put a bunch of people in here, so you've kinda got a, an insurance policy. And I, I, I don't see that necessarily that changes the job descriptions, the, the activities that need to be done a lot, that's a tough sell.
Yeah, yeah.
To, to the taxpayer, I think that's, that's very difficult. But there are a couple of spots where I can see some, some things working out in finance, et cetera. But. And it was, it was an educational report, it was good, and it kind of convinced me or told me that. I suspected we were doing the right things, and we are. So it's encouraging and kind of a roadmap to follow down the road, but. Money wise, it's gonna be a challenge to try and. Deal with some of these issues as he has encouraged us.
And I agree with him.
I thought parts were sloppy. And, and. If you get. But like. Description of the heart being funded by source. If, if. Or, or that it was originally fishing village, it was furniture making. If you're not paying attention to the details that I, that I know about.
Right.
Doesn't give you confidence.
It's not supposed to give groundbreaking.
Get here next month, next time.
Yeah, yeah.
I might have finished the report. But generally, I would like to hear more specifically from where they think we should be located. Because the answer to what we do in this building is compliance related. Anything else that can't wait for three, three weeks?
Okay. Please on updates. Yeah.
Well, we have everything, we pretty much covered all mine yesterday.
Brian?
I'm gonna.
Kathy. I can, Ted was meeting his neighbor, downtown it room is meeting tomorrow morning, so. We've certainly covered the school problems.
I look at that, the historic mission did not meet this, this month, EPW is having a tough time trying to get a better price on the, on the weight binding signs. They're still looking for. They wanted a ton of money. And they're trying to cut the, like 10,000 bucks per, I don't know.
Six signs?
Yeah. Eight signs, it was really crazy. And they were cutting it a little bit, but I don't think they're looking hard, you know, saving 10% is not, well, I hadn't watched. So they're still, they're still.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot one thing. Regarding downtown improvement, we, we have talked about the fact that we, since the community centers completely got an option. We do need a, a decision on battles for the summer season. So Greg, can we put that, can we put that on our action item list so we don't forget? If don't know what the options are, we've gotta have that. Which would be able to make some kind of decisions and get something in place moving against wars.
Hey. Maybe minutes. Mr. Round, no.
Uh, is that me? Yeah. Yes, let's see, I moved that the board approved the consent agenda. Which consists of. Can I break that into two, I cannot vote on the February 3rd minutes. So let me say, I make a motion to approve the January 30th minutes.
For a rediscussion.
Yes.
And says, yes, Kathy, Brian.
Yes.
And Jeff.
And then I will make a motion to approve the February 3rd minutes.
Next. Okay.
This name.
Yes, Kathy, Brian, Jeff, okay. Town administrator is required.
And so I should mention this already, whether you.
So that's something like. Okay, but we made sure that when we talk about. The ways. I'm a little bit concerned that we are under an assumption that the decisions aren't even made, that everything's gonna move on the other side of the highway, and I don't think we have deliberated in that. So I hope that we will see options for keeping at least the fire department, because I don't. Okay, I just feel like we've been talking about it as a big campus over there on School Street, everything's gonna be over there, and we haven't talked about.
But until we know that that's possible.
Right.
Right.
I just don't want that to be the only option.
Since the street COVID. Yeah, what they're, so maybe sure. It, it is greatly important, I can't understand that. And yesterday, they called us, said, we're also critical. All solved in the year. Started at the downstream, you wish your way out. It's been the mantra for 10 years now.
Maybe in our capital plan, by the way, the other comforts.
Uh, not specifically, there's, there's 4 million. Resilience and projects without, without, around specific, specific. Exactly what I'm doing. So obviously, there's a lot of detail, but it was, it was being, pardon me, but you did that one. So, work continues when you're fully permitted, giving out to bid. If we're anxious to know about the construction schedule, if, what, will, will it be one way open for how long? You will have those details once we have a contractor on. We can put that contract on specifically, so then we all lay out. Fill in the answer that's done. If people are anxious to hear that, we need to get that. But becoming, okay, by the end of your summer. Have that determination, have a contractor, start specifying those kind of details. Similarly, of 100 meters. Again, desire for some more details on what, what meters are actually being used, type they are, that sort of thing. Yeah, we need to choose the vendor, like three or four different models out there, once that is, that is, that selection is the bay, then we can provide those kind of details. So there's, there's good, there's good information on both projects, we're trying to populate additional information on the website. Continue to do that. Have all the information until we have those vendors, contractors.
We have it by, shall we?
It's, turn around a lot. That was possible. Probably gonna be talking to.
If we on the call. Possible to have none like what we did for 48. Maybe, maybe. To discuss. The concerns, impacts, I know we don't have much information at this point.
I typically do the history of the information, they have, they have some information.
But we, I think that we learned an awful lot from the 48 presentations. Yeah, you and I should have briefly about, just some down, people have been wanting to, and just let me ask the question, there's a lot of misinformation up there.
Somebody go to the Manchester Club.
Alright.
Go to the Manchester Club and talk about it.
Yeah. I guess, we need some, the. That plus more. Yeah, it's, it's just now getting.
They don't have any answers. I mean, and that will affect everybody quite a bit. None of the other issues, 48 or anything, maybe you have an interest. This will affect everyone in a very big way.
This will be a major construction project. How does it impact on people's life?
Yeah.
No question.
Where do we stand on this walkway thing, is that kind of moving along?
Yeah, just a temporary walk.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah.
Well, I'm good on gliddies, good.
Yeah, we'll use one of the gangways to.
Yeah.
Put over the.
Text point, gangway longer, but let's.
Yeah, it's gonna run behind seaside, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
But, but where's the grant situation?
Yeah, some are still good. Don't worry that that's being impacted, it's a hundred dollars. So far, they've granted us extensions. Keep going. Anxious to give it under my, so then, you don't have to ask for extensions anymore. At some point, they'll say something. So, so much.
Yes.
It says, yes, Kathy.
Yes.
Brian and Jeff.
Yes.
And yes.
Things to sign, Debbie?
Yep. Oh, I see.